Good evening and welcome to the Town of Scarborough Planning Board Meeting for the evening of February 24th, 2014. Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol, would you call Walton?
Ms. Aldis?
Here.
Mr. Buford?
Here.
Mr. Dupont?
Here.
Mr. Fellows?
Here.
Mr. Mazur?
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
Here. With the absence of Mr. Mazur, we... Mr. McGee is a voting member this evening. Think of who was the first to call. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes of January 27th, 2014. I move to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? So, 4-0-1 abstentions. The next item, item number four this evening. We have a public evening, public hearing this evening. Planning Board will conduct a public hearing to receive input regarding a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance to repeal a contract zone four between the Town of Scarborough and Harold Burnham for property located off Vicford Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's nice to be here with the Board this evening. I want to provide a quick overview of what this zoning amendment, or repeal really, of a contract zone is in regard to. I think as some of the Planning Board members were involved in, a few years ago, the Town Council and the Long Range Planning Committee did a fairly comprehensive rezoning of the Pine Point area. And within the Pine Point area, property, many of the properties at the end of Vicford Street and Holly Street were rezoned for, from what was an industrial zone, to a, to the TVC four, Town Village Center four district, really to kind of modernize the type of development that can happen in this area of town, instead of being just an industrial district, actually be a mixed-use district that it could allow some residential development here, close to the beaches, also allow some light commercial and marine-type land uses, given the location of these properties and its proximity to Pine Point and the town launch, et cetera. And when this was done, there was an industrial overlay that remained that would apply to the Holly Street Industrial Park because there's some industrial uses that continue there. When the property owner decides to maybe change direction and develop in a different way, that overlay can be removed. Also, right next door on 24 Vicford Street, there's actually an old contract zone, Contract Zone Four, that allowed for a single-family house to go on that property because at the time, it was industrial-zoned and didn't allow residential development. Now that the TVC four allows residential development, the Contract Zone Four really is obsolete, it's unnecessary, because that use is a conforming use on the property. So, what's before the Planning Board for consideration for public hearing is actually just to remove the Contract Zone Four from the zoning map, also delete it from the zoning ordinance, and have the TVC four be the only zone that applies to 24 Vicford Street. And in addition, there's, as you'll see on this map that's on the monitors in your packages, there's a proposal to rezone sort of the panhandle, or portion of 24 Vicford Street that is currently zoned R2, Residential Two, to TVC four, so the entire property is zoned the same way, to follow the property line, so there isn't two different zones applying to this property. So, that's what's before the Board, and the Town Council approved this amendment at first reading a few weeks ago, after your review and public hearing. It'll go back to the Town Council for their public hearing and consideration under second reading in March.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Before I turn this over to the Board, I would like to offer up an opportunity for a public hearing on this item. I would ask that if anybody would like to speak on this, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. We ask that you try to allow or minimize your comments, if you would, to five minutes or less, and if subsequent speakers were to get up, then we also ask that you keep in mind that the Board has heard the comments from the previous speaker. Anything that you would like to add that would be new would be appreciated, but we do take very seriously all the comments, so it is not necessarily necessary on your part to repeat what's already been said. So, with that, I will open that up to a public hearing. Anybody would like to, please approach the podium at this time. Seeing none, all in favor. And I'll turn it over to the Board. Lori, would you like to start us off this evening?
Sure. I really don't have any thing to add. I had the opportunity to be part of this discussion as part of the Long Range Planning Committee, and I do support this, and I think it makes sense.
Thank you. Scott?
No comments here?
Okay. Dave?
Nothing to add.
Going down the board, Dan.
Just out of sheer curiosity, is there a reason why it went to TVC four rather than an R2 district? Was there some discussion as to why one was chosen over the other?
Already, the majority of the parcel is zone TVC four. A contract zone actually is like an overlay district that applies on top of the zoning that applies to the general area. And the reason it was originally zoned at TVC four a few years ago was it was prior zoned industrial, and so it was a change to TVC four to provide some opportunity for residential development, but also some commercial development opportunity, because industrial provides that currently, or in the past, that commercial development opportunity. So, that's why it initially went from industrial to TVC four.
Thank you. That's it.
Susan?
No problems.
I also have no issues with this at all. Heard it as well through the Long Range Planning Committee process. As a Planning Board member, I am actually not in favor of many contract zones because it really takes all of the power of the Board away, once a zone is actually established. So, I'd like to see them eliminated, and it makes the most sense to have this all followed with the property lines, that we don't have a piece of property that has two different zones. So, I'm totally in favor of it as well, and would ask that, based on the comments, that we send a positive recommendation to the Town Council regarding this item. Any other comments? We'll move on. Our next item this evening, Good Rebel Holdings LLC requests a site plan review for a plus-or-minus 12,000-square-foot indoor climbing facility on the Higas Parkway. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Board is well aware of, you've reviewed this project a few different times in the last few months. They've been updating the plans and trying to address those comments at those meetings. I just want to highlight a few things in both the planning staff comments and site design comments, and then turn it over to the Board and the applicant. Under site access, there's still a few more details to be worked out on traffic impact fees, just reconciling traffic generation. The applicant still needs a modest approval from DOT on adjusting the location of the curb cut to Higas Parkway. It's not a traffic movement permit or a significant permit, but given Higas Parkway is a limited-access highway, there does need to be a slight shift in the access location and a change in the classification of the access from residential, which is the current use of that curb cut to a commercial accessway. On the staff comments, identifies a discussion point the Board might want to consider on whether or not to extend the sidewalk that's on the site out to the common entrance into this site and to the rest of the scammon property. The applicant's narrative suggests that the clearing for the underground utilities was to be narrowed to provide more of buffering and less removal of the trees along Higas Parkway. I think that's their intent. The plans just haven't been updated to show a 15-foot-wide clearing rather than six, excuse me, 30 before. And I think, other than that, architecture has been talked a lot about the last few meetings, and I know they've provided the Board with some new elevations and new information on adjustments to those elevations and colors, et cetera. And that's probably the focus of your discussion tonight, as a lot of the other things have been updated and addressed as the Board's reviews occurred. Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. First of all, my name's Mark Ritchie. I'm here with my partner Fred Wilkinson. You represent Good Rebel Holdings and the Salt Pump Climbing Facility. And I want to thank the Board and the Chair for rescheduling this meeting and saving myself from having to drive up from Boston in last Tuesday's storm, because I was not looking forward to that, but thank you. So, I think this is about the fourth, or maybe fifth, meeting that we've met here and talked about the project, and we've been working along with this Board to try to bring this project to an approval of the site plan review. I know that we've had some challenges with the elevations and the facade. We went back to the drawing board with our, worked with our architect, Port City Architecture, and I think we've responded to a lot of the concerns that this Board had in the last meetings. So, we brought Andy Highland here from Port City Architecture to describe what we've done with the, with the architecture, with the elevations, and I'm going to hand it over to Andy, but we also would like to talk a little bit about the civil design. So, I think that would be quicker, so maybe we start with that, if that pleases the Board. Okay. So, Jim Fisher from Northeast Civil Solutions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm Jim Fisher with NCS, here representing our clients, and with Andy Highland here talking in a few moments about the architecture. I'd like to go over just very, very briefly. I don't think we need to rehash the project overall, but as Dan had mentioned, I'd just like to reiterate that I do have a couple of comments regarding some of the site considerations pertaining to the civil aspect of the project. Toward that end, we would, the purpose of our being here this evening is ostensibly, based on the pension of the Board, to receive final approvals with condition. There will be some. Hopefully, most of those will be staff conditions, but again, that's up to the will of the Board. The three, the three aspects of what the project that Dan had mentioned, just want to address those really quickly. One was the, or the first one was basically the DOT issue. It does require a, just a driveway permit or an entrance permit, it's not requiring a full movement permit, so that's easy. The other thing is that the DOT was the one, when we first went to them, that suggested we put the access where we do. So, they are in the process, the long process, of actually getting back to us. We know that we're not going to be building anything before the DOT permits come in, but given that they were the ones that initially said, "You really need to put your entrance here, and we understand what you're doing, and this will be fine." We're just waiting on that permit, which could be tomorrow or several more weeks. We're just not sure. So, toward that end, we'd like to be able to supply that to staff, and obviously, if there's any issues with it, we'll be back before the Board, but other than that, we'd like to be able to supply it to staff, and staff would then review it and say, "Okay." The other issue is the sidewalk. One of the issues is sidewalk, as you can see here in yellow, we did add the sidewalk around the perimeter of the building, or the front of the facade of the building. One of the connections, I believe, that the staff or the Town per regulation is looking for is a connect, interconnectivity basically of sites. We would suggest that we probably don't want to have a sidewalk directly out to Higas Parkway. That's probably not the best idea. As you all know, having, or as we all know, having traveled that Parkway, the speeds can get up a little bit, and putting pedestrians right along the street would probably not be too cool. So, what we did was have the parking, or the sidewalk as you see it, to the extent that it does need to get extended, that's not really a big issue. Right now, there are no sites, or no, there's no improvement on the sites that are on either side of us. So, if we were to put, extend a sidewalk out to the perimeter, the perimeters of the area, ostensibly the sites on either side, they really don't go anywhere. In and of itself, that's not a consideration, however, if and when those properties do get developed, and at some time, hopefully, they will be, we're not really sure where that connection would be. So, toward that end, we'd like to be able to continue with what we've got here, and if there's ever a connection that would then be required, perhaps less of a sidewalk than maybe a wood-chipped pathway, because it's still a wooded area, generally speaking, that could connect, for instance, over in this particular, excuse me, this particular section right here, this is the property line, and then over here, just a little jaunt down to this property line, and then we should be all set. The other issue, the final issue, is the landscaping that Dan was referring to, and that is the 15-foot width. It's a little difficult for you to see here, but we have actually done that with a new set of plans, and this corridor right here, which was, this is the utility corridor, as it were, how we're going to be getting all of our public utilities in from the Higas Parkway into our building. We had that initially at 30 feet. We didn't really need it. It's, as far as the width is concerned, for the utilities and the ability for us to be able to actually get in there, minimize the impact, as far as cutting any of the bushes or the trees, we did figure we could get that down to 15 feet fairly easily. That will be, according to the landscaping plan, that will be replanted, albeit slightly, because you don't want to plant anything too large over public utilities in case we have to get into them again. So, again, we've narrowed that corridor, as it were, to 15 feet, which I believe was the request of the Board, and then the landscaping over the top of it will be landscaped, but it will be fairly minimal. Given that, that really addresses all the issues that we had from a site civil perspective. So, again, we'd like to be able to address any questions or comments that you might have, going backward, about the landscaping corridor, which is fairly easy to take a look at, the sidewalk issue, and then, again, the DOT permit that we will receive, obviously, before we need to do any construction out there, and we'll give that to the staff, and then we'll go from there. Toward that end, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. Thank you.
Think we'll hear the whole presentation before I turn it over to the Board?
Then, at that point, turn it over to Mr. Highland, and he'll wow you with details on the architecture.
Turn the monitors on, I guess?
They're on.
They are? Okay. I'll turn my computer on then.
Yeah, that might be it.
Work it that way. Ah, there we go. So, again, I'm Andy Highland at Port City Architecture, and we've been working with Mark and Freddie for a while, doing the construction documents for the project, and they brought us in also to try to help them with some of the exterior of the, of the building and the facade as well. So, what you're seeing is kind of the results of our endeavors on it. I guess I'd like to start with, so this is, and this view here is, is actually out from the Parkway, but there's, I took a lot of the trees out, just to kind of give you kind of an idea of what the building looked like, maybe go into a, I'm sorry, these aren't in the right order here, a little closer-up shot of the, of the project. So, this is the, the front entrance that faces the Parkway. And, and we started with really kind of take a look at it from scratch, as Mark said, you know, kind of taking a look at the volumes of the space, kind of what we would, what we thought, they were pretty open to kind of just getting our input on the whole, on the whole piece of it. As, if any of you know any of the other projects that we do, it's probably a little bit of a departure from Port City, where a little more New England-looking typically in a lot of our projects. But, but as I took a look at this space and kind of the needs of it, you know, it's a rock-climbing facility. It needs to have a big volume. The top portions, the larger portion on the left, for the interior climbing walls, is about 47 feet to the, to the peak of the ridge there. And the right side's about 29 feet. The whole building's 50 by 200. So, the program requirement is that size of a, of a box, and kind of that's what I start with, you know? Here's what I need inside, and anything else that we apply to it's got to be on top of that or outside of that. So, to really put, you know, a lot of, you know, peaked roofs, things like that, on this building, would have increased, in my mind, the scale of it, you know, enormously. So, what we tried to do was say, you know, let's try to bring down the scale, make it a little bit more pedestrian, and, and add elements that give it visual interest on the outside, but kind of keep it true to the function that's going on inside, and, and to also, like I said, just break up the facade and, and, you know, work to, to give it more interest. So, what we, what we started with, we kind of sat down and, and thought, "Well, it's climbing facility, what kind of materials, what kind of would be appropriate?" We kind of came up with a theme of, well, you know, you climb on rocks and stones, so we came up with the theme of maybe faceted stone projections on the outside of the building. And, and the material, the base material, being a vertical, a linear metal, that's kind of give you the idea of trees in the forest, and then these other elements that give you more of an idea of kind of stone and faceted stones. So, looking at that, we've used some new materials recently. Just put this on the dental school in Portland. These are, this is a real porcelain tile that's an exterior cladding material, and we like it. It's, it's durable. It's, it's real porcelain tile. It comes in five-foot by 10-foot sheets, and just about this, this thick right here. And it has a very nice look. It's not shiny. It comes in a number of different colors, and we kind of like the one that we're looking at here, and then it kind of gives you that stone appearance. I can kind of pass some of these materials right on. I don't know if you want the big sample or little sample?
I'll take the little sample.
Okay. All right. This is the big one. It's up, it's up right now, like I said, in a, that's going to be the windows and a little accent around the, the windows and the door frames.
So, that would be what I'm looking at?
Yeah, let me see if this'll, if it doesn't laser off and blind you guys, so everybody be careful here. But this, just kind of window, door, and window frames in here, just as a little bit of an accent for a little bit of color in the, in the project. The, the stone material is all, is these faceted pieces. And the other, the other, we're trying to stay true to the function inside, is that there's not a lot of place for real windows, because a lot of the inside walls are, you know, already formed in the rock-climbing materials. So, putting a window in would just light up kind of the backside of the, the rock faces that are on the inside. So, we went through and really kind of found places where windows really did make sense, that they could light up the interior of the facility, put a clear story on the top here, on the top here. This is between a couple of facets, right in, in that area. Maybe I can use this one for the audience, I guess. And, and then, of course, the main entrance, which kind of runs right through the middle. Get to the next, next one here. So, this is kind of more of a close-up. On, on this end right here, I guess I'll go over here, we didn't have a, there's, really, it's just completely lined with, with the rock-faced walls. So, what we wanted to do here, we brought out these faceted materials, and then, and it goes, it's, it's got a lot of relief, and what we're looking at doing is maybe a backlit light fixture. We have a, it's a kind of little square trellis, galvanized trellis, that it's going to go up in the back here, and we're going to try to bring up some vines, some appropriate materials that'll bring the, bring the green then up into, into the area, and bring kind of the ground and the vegetation up. So, we get the, the trees, the stone, and then trying to get the vegetation in some of these areas to give it some more interest. So, the light fixture, like I said there, would kind of backlight this at night. It would be a nice feature, soft. The other thing we're looking at in the materials, as you kind of look as they go by you, was try to keep it, keep it a natural palette, too, to not go with a lot of really, you know, crazy colors on it, to make it a little more timeless, and, and just the building itself, and, and just natural-looking colors to blend in with the landscape. See, some other, losing my mouse here. On the rear of the facility, we brought the same materials around. This is another window bay here. This, this one is the kind of back, there's a little back porch that you can step out to overlooking that little pond area in the back, and had another, some room for windows in the back as well. What we tried to do on, so the two entrances, or the, the front entrance that kind of creates this bar that, you know, kind of runs right through the two windows, when you walk in, you'll be able to see right through the facility out to the pond. And we brought these up higher on each side, and that's where, that's the, all the mechanical equipment we located, right in that kind of crook.
There?
The mechanical, so this is, this is this piece on the back that we brought up. We did the same with the front. Let me get back to there. So, this area right here is brought up higher than the roof, and right in between those two is the mechan, all the mechanical equipment we lined up and screened right behind these two, the two kind of front and rear entrance pieces. I always like to incorporate the signage, instead of trying, you know, as an afterthought, thinking and sticking it on the building somewhere. We put it on over the front door, incorporated a band. So, there's a metallic band that goes in the same color, the darker color that'll go, and cut out letters that'll be kind of backlit with the Salt Pump logo on the front. And we'll light the insides here, so in the evening, it'll be a nice glow at the entrance with the signage, with the light from the inside of the facility, and glow down into these kind of little faceted planters that go on the outside. Let's see. So, again, we looked at, you know, we, they gave us kind of pretty much, you know, let us do what we thought was appropriate with the whole facility. I looked at, you know, we looked at all sorts of different sizes of this, bringing these up tall. When I did that, it just really started to accentuate the height of the whole facility. I think we tried to line these up more in, in a similar line, and especially to try to unify the two, because, you know, you have this large half and small half. So, we tried to use these materials to really, you know, bring across a line that really unified the lower half to the upper half, and brought it down, I mean, it's still, they're still tall, but brought it down, you know, from the, from the large height. And I think the effect is going to be that you're really going to kind of focus on this nice material in the entrance, and, and these couple of elements on the front, and the rest of the building will just work as backdrop to the, to the project. See if I have any other, I think that's, if there was any other items that I wanted to go in, screen the mechanicals, you know, again, working in... to go in, screen the mechanicals, you know, again, working in, in, in scale. We brought these out, this one comes out about five feet, so we did bring it out a pretty good depth. These facets come out about almost to three feet at the point, so there will be some good shadow lines on the building, and I think it'll be some interesting shadow lines too, as they come out in, in, you know, kind of angles instead of just square boxes, and give it that more organic, organic look. So I do have a 3D model here, these are just still shots of it. If you, it's, it's a big file, and it works a little bit slow, but if you were interested or wanted to look at something from another angle, we can, you know, kind of go through to some other shots if you're, if you're interested. So that's, like I said, it, it moves slow, but we can kind of move the, move it around if we need to. So, that's, that's the architectural portion, and we're happy to take questions as well. I think it'll move. There we go, ah, yeah, see, takes a little while to regenerate. There's the mechanical units again up in between, that you can see, you know, between these two pieces, the entrance canopy and this one that'll hide those, they can get out, there's a door on the, on the end right up here that they can, we've incorporated a ladder, and they'll be easy to work on in the top. And that's the clear story lighting, this is again, the, the rear of the project in the back. And I think it makes a nice, simple design, I think it's got some visual interest, it'll have good shadows on it, and we, we feel it's a real appropriate solution. So thank you.
Thank you, does that conclude the presentation for the applicant?
I-
I guess it does.
I believe that does, thank you.
Thank you, I'll turn it over to the board. Dave?
Thank you. I like it. I think it's a big improvement over what we saw last time. When I look at this, I definitely don't see a building that looks like in a warehouse. So I think you've done a nice job to greatly improve the appearance. And it, it kind of, to me, looking at this, it kind of draws me in as far as my interest is. Looking at the building, you know, I'd, I'd have the, you know, the, the thought that, gee, this is interesting, I wonder what's in there, you know? It's, I think you've done a nice job. So I have no issues.
Thanks, Dave. Change things up a little bit, Corey?
Oh, all right.
Was it caught your eye?
No, I, I think you, I think you really hit it out of the park on this, in my opinion. I think it's a huge improvement, and I think it, as, as you said, it adds a lot of visual interest, it does sort of draw you in, and I think you've succeeded in sort of breaking up the building and, and adding interest in a way that doesn't seem arbitrary, like just sort of adding a band to break up a, a long stretch of blank space. And, I also, I think it's just a very thoughtful approach overall, like your solution for screening the mechanicals. And again, it's, it's something that, I like the fact that it's all sort of integrated and, and functional. So, in my mind anyway, the, I think you've solved the, the architectural problem or risen to that challenge, and really appreciate the, the extra effort there. In terms of some of the other items, the, some of the, so site or civil related items, sounds like those are either being addressed or on their way to being addressed, and to the extent we need to maybe wordsmith something in, in conditions if we get to that point around exactly what, how we leave things with pedestrian connectivity, I, I think we need to at least make provisions to, to have that, to have that possible at some point. But beyond that, I don't think I have anything else. Thanks.
Thank you.
I, I like what you've done, it turned out real nice, guys. That's all I have for comments.
Thanks, Dave. John?
All right, great, you've done a good job, first time I was certainly opposed to the other desire. Pretty much for this, I noticed the increase in height from forty-four to forty-seven, is there a reason that had been increased?
Yes. Could you go to the mic, please?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we've, after surveying rock climbing facilities across the country, we felt that to produce a state-of-the-art climbing facility, which is what we want to do, we needed to go a little bit higher to encourage international competitions, we need the leadable rope length of, that we get in forty-seven feet, so that's the reason.
All right, that makes sense. But on that, good job, very good response to what we wanted.
Susan?
Boy, am I pleasantly surprised. Having just come onto the board, I'd been told, by little people here and there, that the big problem was, was the design of the building itself, the exterior of the building, and I didn't know what I was going to see, but this is really very creative. I had to have a question, the, the thing you passed around, the dark material is what's going to go around the doors and the windows?
Yes, correct.
Okay, the orange, if you will, orange-
Yeah, the, the-
That's going to go around-
The kind of brick, brick color is the metal of the, there'll be aluminum windows.
The light tan is the exterior?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm trying to keep it kind of, you know, muted and, and natural.
But it's got, it's, um-
Yeah, it'll be a vertical, we're looking at different, you know, some different sightings, so it'll be a good quality.
But it won't be flat like this?
Oh, no, 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 that's just for color.
This will be the color.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Let's take pictures of this and put it, put it in the file. For some of you may know, I spent awfully long time on this board at one point in time, and I, from, one of the experiences we would have is that what we were looking at would be great, but then what went up?
Right, right.
You know?
Well, you can keep the sample.
So, I don't want to keep it, but-
Dan can, Dan can lock it up.
I want it in the file just to make sure it comes up, but it's a very, it really- What I like the most about it is that the, the Hagis Parkway was about quality, but it doesn't have, it never said it had to be New England.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And this is quality, and I, I really like it. Just going to double check, you really are sure that those added height in the front and the back is going to cover the mechanicals?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm good, yeah. I wouldn't lie to you.
No, you haven't yet.
I, I've been good, yeah.
I like the fact-
That's a note to self, I'm the Construction Administration, I'm going to make sure that that covers.
We're pretty good at sniffing out kind of thing. I love the fact that it's not shiny.
Yeah, yeah, it's a neat material, like I said, we just used it, there's a, a black version of it, we just did a new dental college in, at UNE in Portland.
I noticed it's wonderful.
And, and it has a black version of that, but it, it's really impenetrable, it needs no maintenance, and it's going to give you that nice kind of stone look. It's, of course, I said, of course, another product from Europe somewhere that we've, now, this is our American version that we-
Of course it is.
-picked up, yeah.
I really like the additions to what you've done on the side and the lighting, that is really going to make a difference, a big difference. Putting vines or something in there, does that need to go on the, the landscape plan, I ask staff? The fact that they've created as a result of this, planters in which there will be-
It should, I don't know if we've had time to, we, we've communicated with, with our, our civil-
I'm not saying that we necessarily have to have that decision right here, but when the decision is made, does it need to be added to the landscape?
I think for the benefit of the landscape installer, as well as staff, when we do the inspection, it'd be useful to know-
Okay.
...species and quantity, just everyone's under the same understanding.
We, we expect it's kind of a, a system actually out there that does like a green wall, so we've, we've got, it's like a two-sided, you know, you know, kind of mesh, and with a solid piece that'll go in there.
My only question was to make sure that it's actually written in and very clear what it's going to end up being.
Okay.
I'm looking at a point where I can't see it with my glasses and I can't see it without my glasses, but I'm looking at a reduced version of the site plan. And the clearing for the front of the building, this is not to the, this is not to the architecture-
Your turn, thank you.
It says selectively clear understory vegetation, remove trees under four-inch caliber and all shrubs under thirty-inch in height. I think that what we're trying to get at is to not have it look the way it does now.
Yes.
Which is, you know, like, totally unkept. But it's my opinion that we might want to go back and take a look as to whether we really have to take out four-inch caliper trees. I mean, I know we want to be seen when we go by, but if you were to landscape something new, a four-inch caliper tree is probably what they'd plant. No, you can answer anything, I mean, I'm new to, I'm, I'm new to, this is the first time I've seen this, so if I'm asking something that's already been decided, just let me know.
It says, most of us who have- Most of us who have, are very familiar with the Hagis Parkway know, as Susan had mentioned, that it's rather wooded, along the entire way, and it tends to be rather, for lack of a better term, scrabbly, and there, there's not a whole lot of uniformity there, and it was natural, it wasn't specifically planted. So what we're looking at doing in some of these photographs, this is the pictures that we're just taking this past autumn, and what we're looking to do, as Susan had mentioned, is clean out a little bit of it to a certain extent, so that people can identify it. Right now, the woods are relatively thick to the point that if anybody's driving by the Hagis relatively quickly, they're going to go right by the entrance. Having said that, however, there are quite a number of standing trees, large caliper trees, some of them go up to over thirty inches. So, starting from the top, as it were, the larger caliber and coming down, we plan on retaining those larger trees, and you'll see that on the plan, and as they are identified here, there are quite a number of them that we plan to, to keep. Specifically, those that are, are highlighted here throughout this particular section. We want to be able to keep as much of the natural quality as possible, but still be able to thin it to the point where people can see through to this building, that it's quite aesthetically pleasing.
I understand the concept, my questions are very specific.
Okay.
Orange caliber.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. It is not clear to me what this is going to look like, when, I mean, we don't want it to look the way it does now.
Yes, quite.
I agree completely. We do want it to look like it was originally a wooded area, however, and not just a sparse, or not just tall white pine trees, if there's anything else out there.
Sure.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that under four calipers is not too small, and I also wonder, it says, what is, what is going to be left when the trees, when, when, we have the tall trees there?
Yes.
If you take out everything four-inch caliber and down, what's left?
Well, we're not taking out everything, but those that we do take out, which are the, let's call it what they are, they're kind of the weed trees, as it were. To be able to clean up that area-
I'm just trying to figure out whether we need to put something else back in as a result of which you're taking out, because-
Absolutely, and we are doing that, and you'll see based on the, the planting schedule up in this area, these are corresponding, these are the, the common names, the Latin names, the numbers that we're looking at, et cetera.
They're going to go right there in the front?
And yes, they are identified, well, not just the front, they're identified as over in this area, then down in this section over here, and then across the front, so it's not just the front that we're looking at. But yes, we do plan to augment, augment these, what we take out with specific planted landscape materials. It's going to look very nice as far as the aesthetic is concerned, which is easy to say, but that's what the planting schedule is for.
I think my problem is that I'm not accustomed to seeing anything this small. When I was on the board before, we had those great big plans, and everybody was overlapping everybody else's, and papers were being flown in the air all the time, and it was very, very difficult, and this is ever so much easier, but I can't read it. So I can't really tell what's going to be left, but I trust you.
Thank you.
I think, you, you know what it is we're looking for.
Yes, absolutely.
I just don't want to have anything taken down that doesn't have to be taken down.
And we agree, absolutely, there are just, there's so much of it right now, it's very profligate as far as the amount of just stuff that's kind of naturally that's packed in there, and we would like to clear that out selectively, and then replant, so it looks even better.
Those are my concerns, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Just a few comments if I might. I as well appreciate the architectural changes. Where we came from originally to where we are today is two different buildings. Conceptually, they're the same, but structure or the physical appearance of the buildings are substantially different. So thank you, we appreciate the efforts that you've put forth, and we know that you worked hard to do that, and we thank you for those efforts. A couple of my questions, and, from an architectural standpoint, I guess, is there any concern about ice or anything coming off the roof with, in terms of location of sidewalk, or? Here we are in this lovely Maine winter, and I'm seeing stuff flying all over the place off roofs at times now, and so I'm curious to see if there was a consideration given of that.
Well, uh, yes, I, I always give consideration to that, I mean, that's the bane of being an architect here, having icicles hanging over the entrance. This, the whole roof on the, on both sides actually pitch, pitch away and down into the sides, so the, the, there's a flow and a, and drainage off of this roof, not to the front or to the rear, but to each end, so we've, we've done the pitches that way, and each of those ends is, there's no sidewalk and no, no areas out there, so, so yeah, we're, we, we feel that that'll be a good, you know, a good solution. And just shallow pitch, so it's not going to come screaming off either.
Okay. One of the other items that was mentioned at one point in the write-up, and I don't know if we've come to any conclusion on it, was that there was going to be some additional traffic movement counts from the Newburyport facility, I believe?
Yes.
Have we done those, and do we know what they are?
We have done them, we do know what they are. Bill Bray is our traffic engineer, and he has recalculated the impact fee, which is slightly higher than his calculation from before. As you mentioned, Alan, the, what we had before was out of the book, basically, and because we have a facility that is somewhat akin to this one, to be sure, in Newburyport, he actually went down there and did counts twice, just to take a look at the, the peak hours, which typically, or the peak time period remains to be seen essentially, but generally speaking, it's a, it's a facility that is probably going to attract the preponderance of its crowd in the wintertime, for lack of anywhere else to go and do this kind of thing. So toward that end, it was actually a perfect time, these counts were done in January and February, by the way, so it's very, it's a perfect time at this other facility just to take a look at how much traffic they actually generated. The answer to your question is, we have that report, we'll provide that to staff, and it does have the recalculation of the impact fee, so that is completed.
That takes care of the impact fee, which is great, my concern being the larger one is the parking situation, are we still good in terms of what we think we're going to see for traffic, heavy, heavy peak traffic, if you will, and how that would relate to the parking spaces that we're providing for the facility, are we still comfortable with that piece?
Yes, very comfortable, not only is the information that's out of the book help us toward that end, which is relatively generic and it's applicable throughout the country, but now that we actually have a specific, as far as the Newbury, as far as comparison is concerned, in the Newburyport facility, when Bill redid his calculations, it actually went up by two tenths as far as the traffic that's being generated in a peak hour, which is almost negligible. So toward that end, the answer to your question is, yes, we're very satisfied that the parking we have right now is still going to be more than accommodating for the, the number of people that we expect to have there.
Okay. One of the difficult things here is that we have a very unique building with a very specific purpose that, you know, should it become something else down the road, trying to make sure that the infrastructure, if you will, that we're putting in place might still be adequate for that down the road. But as I've indicated in the past, we don't want that to be the case, but one of the things we have to consider is how else might this facility be used at some point in time, so.
Certainly, that's what planning is all about.
That's part of our dilemma, if you will, with some of the architecture pieces, that I think that you've really done a very nice job with, so.
Mr. Chairman, could I just respond to that?
Please.
Um, B.
The climbing gym in, that we're talking about in Newburyport is actually in my building, so I'm- so I'm quite intimate and familiar with what goes on there. It's a climbing facility of exactly the same size, ten thousand square foot facility, as ours is. Arguably, in a very similar demographic region, Newburyport. It has thirty-two parking spaces, and we have never at any time exceeded that at one given time. So our facility has forty-five, so we feel comfortable that we have adequate overflow and sufficient for this facility, so...
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any other concerns or questions from the board, Susan?
I forgot. I'm a little confused about the sidewalk piece. I understand not doing anything right now, but is there a way, is there any issue that the staff especially can see about, well, when something goes in next door, or when a sidewalk becomes, becomes necessary, that wanted, that the applicant will then create their sidewalk? Has that become a condition? Is it...
I think we have a condition.
We do have a condition for that?
You haven't seen it yet?
Nope. You answered my question, then, thank you.
Any other concerns?
Wasn't there a, wasn't the fire department concerned on that turnaround?
Yeah, that's been revised, and they've reviewed it, and they're satisfied with the updates the applicants made on the turnaround.
Okay, thanks. So I think the staff concerns have been generally met?
Yes, and not being aware of Bill Bray's latest updates on traffic, there is a drafted condition in there about that. Maybe it's obsolete already, but if it is, then they've already met a condition before it's...
You'd be happy to have that as a condition.
But it at least, also by putting it in here, I think also gives our peer reviewer a chance to review it, if that is necessary. So, I don't see it as a, I don't think it's an issue yet. I don't see it as a...
And Mr. Chairman, just for your information, we actually have that report that I'll give to Dan this evening. It's completed.
Appreciate that. Anybody else? All right. I'd like to place a motion that the planning board approve the application of Good Rebel Holdings LLC, represented by Northeast Civil Solutions, under Chapter 405, the Town of Scarborough zoning ordinance, and Chapter 405B, the Town of Scarborough site plan review ordinance, with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. Findings. Good Rebel Property Holdings LLC proposes to develop 1.45 acres on the southern portion of the property located at 36 Higginson Parkway, which is identified on the Town of Scarborough tax maps as map R50 Lot 24. The site has three hundred and sixty feet plus or minus of footage along Higginson Parkway. It will have shared access from the Higginson Parkway with the remainder of the parent parcel. The property is located within the Higginson Parkway zoning district. The site plan has been designed to accommodate a rock climbing facility in a twelve thousand square foot plus or minus building, along with the associated site improvements. The planning board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation, and finds the proposed design of the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review ordinance requirements for site utilization and layout, internal vehicular movement, pedestrian ways, landscaping, stormwater management, architecture signage, utilities, and storage. The planning board has reviewed the architectural details of the proposed structure, and finds that the building architecture and site layout are in accordance with the position, the provisions of the design standard for Scarborough's commercial districts, with the following waiver below. Waivers. Due to the unique use of the structure as a climbing gym and the overall contemporary building design, the board waives the use in size standards for applying the alternative design provisions set forth in the office building subsection of the design standards. Conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide a revised traffic, traffic impact fee assessment report for review and approval by staff, pay peer review fees, provide a copy of the DOT permit for the town's record, provide a revised plan set, including modifications to address the utility cut and enhanced landscaping through the Higginson Parkway buffer strip. The applicant shall execute the maintenance agreement as required by the post-construction stormwater infrastructure maintenance ordinance. That applicant work with the planning board on a pedestrian connection to the...
To the remainder of the scam and property.
When it's further developed. Thank you. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance, the applicant shall submit evidence in the form of a letter or plan prepared and stamped by a professional engineer, who will either prepare the post-construction stormwater management plan and its associated facilities, or supervise the plan and facilities' construction and implementation. The letter or plan shall certify that the stormwater facilities have been installed in accordance with the approved post-construction stormwater management plan, and that they will function as intended by said plan. And additional, any additional plantings for the wall mesh shall be included on the landscaping plan. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Comments?
Just one quick clarification. During your reading, the, I guess it would be on condition F regarding the sidewalks, I believe you said it was the, the applicant would have to work with the planning board on future developments? Did you mean to say the planning staff?
I wrote planning board because the scam and property would likely go through planning board review. Presumably, a similar project, a subdivision, an office building would come into the board because it's owned commercially. So, I wrote planning board because you'd likely be looking at the remainder of the property, and you could consider how it's connected.
I guess my question would be more or less for this specific applicant to connect to the other properties. Would it be wise use of their time and our time to actually meet in front of the full planning board, or rather, work with staff to connect to what the planning board will approve on future developments?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to suggest that they're coming in with their engineers and having a review process like this. So, it could also be planning staff. It was more of a timing issue. The planning board review period of the remainder of the parcel would be when we need to figure out the connection. So, it can be changed to planning department, that's, that's fine.
My preference would be planning department.
Because the other potential, the other potentials, that something minor like this could potentially be addressed as an administrative change by whoever's chair at that time. So, in essence, that would still be an action taken by the board through the chair, administrative. So, however the board decides that they would like to proceed, it's fine. But if there's a general statement to...
Yes, my only, my only concern would be forcing them to come back here to put in fifteen feet of sidewalks, that, you know, whether it's a good use of their time and ours.
Could that decision be made by staff? That decision, I don't see a reason why. I wouldn't be comfortable doing that. Is there anybody else? Is there anybody uncomfortable with staff doing that?
Absolutely not.
Then, I would amend my motion to say planning staff as opposed to planning board. Does the second still hold?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Can I show that to the unanimous?
Thank you for your time.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Our next item this evening, Anthony Vale Way subdivision. Norman Barubi Builders request a preliminary subdivision review for three single lots on Sarah Liberty Lane. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board reviewed this project last at a sketch plan a few months ago. At that meeting, there were some questions about exactly how this proposal fit into Tamarack Place, which is the adjacent subdivision. Since then, the applicants tried to clarify those questions in your, in your package in their submission. Provided to you, you should have some staff comments in a memo, also a memo from Jim Wendell, our town engineer, Peter Tubbs of SYT Design, also reviewing engineering, and from Bill Bray, who's viewed the project in terms of the traffic generation out of it, as it relates to the town's impact fee zones. We've also gotten three different emails from abudders, primarily with concerns about the existing groundwater in the area, high water table that exists in the area, and another email about, for the history of the project, again, as it relates to Tamarack Place that was approved in early 2000s. Like, we've heard from abudders, some of our staff comments do focus around concerns over the water table level in this area, and that there's some surface water that occurs from time to time, over an annual year, a calendar year. And it's a bit unique in that the water table feature doesn't actually classify as wetlands necessarily. Typically, in our net residential density calculations, wetlands are deducted, and that's what the board focuses on, in large part. This is kind of a circumstance where there's a high water table, but it's sandier soils, and they're not wetlands present. But it seems to be a challenge for abutting property owners, and so staff recommends that a lot of thought be given to this particular issue, and maybe some consideration about getting some guidance from maybe a hydrologist, or a professional that can provide some guidance on this, to better understand what's occurring out there. It's also been a problem for Public Works, as it relates to the town's road system and culverts in the vicinity. And they've done a fair amount of work with some of the abudders on helping relieve some of the surface water challenges out there, along Holmes Road and Sarah Liberty. Other than that, we do have some comments, too, about the road design, the way it's laid out. The hammerhead doesn't meet the town design standard, it's on the, the turnaround's on the other side. And the, it's a fair amount of road infrastructure for three lots, coming off of a cul-de-sac, so Public Works has reviewed it and isn't recommending it be a public road, particularly the way it's designed. It may be better suited for a private road with private maintenance, given the circumstances. I think the other, only other comment, I think is worthy of noting before I turn it back to Mr. Chair, is there is a waiver request on conducting a nitrate plume analysis for the project. I think the request is such, because of the size of the overall parcel, the lots are fairly small, to be served by well and septic. So I think the board should discuss whether we want to waive the nitrate plume analysis that looks at, you know, the, the septic leach areas and how much space is provided there for both those and well zones on individual lots. And they're about thirty thousand square feet, so that it's getting close to being tight, so it might be worth still conducting that analysis, but that's something the board should weigh in on. So, with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Good evening, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Bill Thompson with BH2M Engineers, here for Norman Barubi Builders for the three lot Anthony Vale Way subdivision that's depicted on the, on the plan here. As Dan indicated, we were back here in November, we had a conventional plan that we presented with the eighty thousand square foot lot, which would be in this RF zone. But being an RF zone, conservation subdivision is required. We have twenty-two point seven acres for the three lots. Each lot will be thirty thousand square foot or greater. The frontage is one fifty or greater. A couple of the lots tend to be closer to two hundred feet of frontage. This area of town, drilled wells are required, there's no public water, and also onsite subsurface disposal systems. We have conducted the soil tests out here to support those, and the groundwater evidence was anywhere from fifteen to eighteen inches below the surface, and our logs are all part of the submission that we brought into the town. We have fire protection out at the Holmes Road, at Sarah Liberty Lane, and of course, this road comes in off Sarah Liberty Lane. There is a fire tank out there, and we're waiting for the fire chief to respond, but our indication is the distance for these three lots could be served by that facility that's in place. As with all projects, we'll have underground electric. Our roadway, proposed roadway coming in off Sarah Liberty is seven hundred and forty feet. The first three hundred and fifty feet of road, we will have curbing, twenty-one foot wide road with curb. That way, we can control any of the surface water on that roadway. The road will be crowned, when the water gets to the curb, it'll travel down the road in a southwesterly direction. And at three hundred and fifty feet or three hundred and forty feet, I'll stop the curb and go into ditches, and I'll run the ditches down to the end of the road, through a level spreader, and then dissipate out into the wetland, which is about a fourteen acre wetland. The open space area, of course, is designated, delineated there, we do not propose any, any activity, other than just to provide that, that open space. As Dan indicated, peer review has been conducted, Peter Tubbs has looked at it, we've responded back through his memos, and also Jim Wendell, both at this point are supporting a preliminary approval, or at least we're at a preliminary point for consideration. Dan indicated also requesting a nitrate study. We have, has requested to locate the wells and septics on the abutting properties, to see if there would be any impact from anything that we're proposing. Our septic locations are here, there's nothing closer than a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet from the boundaries, and we feel, again, that a waiver of the nitrate study would not, not be out of, out of line. This property, as you know, the neighbors have voiced some concerns, I've seen some pawning out here, I've had photos submitted, and I think some, some documents have been submitted to the town for our review. Back in 2001, there was a groundwater elevation study done for Mr. Grandin, who owned the land at that time. And the findings at that time indicated, what we've found, is that the groundwater evidence is anywhere from fifteen to eighteen inches below ground, and the subsurface water tends to duplicate at grade elevations, if you will. The groundwater, ever so slightly, is going in a south-southeastly direction into this wetland, which was the findings back in 2001. So, what I've tried to accomplish here... What we've tried to do is, is not impact any of the properties to the south, to the north, rather, off the Holmes Road. So I've kept the road as far off of the common boundary line as we could, curbed the roadway, so any water, and I've raised the road, as you can see here, I've got three feet of fill under this end of the road, and then the two feet of roadway gravel.
Stand on the other side, you're sure?
Sure.
Then you can't hear, does the mic?
Then I can't reach the mic.
Well, can the camera get it if I move the easel?
It'd be nice for us to be able to see it.
Well, I'm not sure where the best spot is going to be. Does the microphone come? Let me try that. Okay. So anyway, what I've tried to do here is, you know, this land is very flat, it's very little grade across here. The neighbors are experiencing problems with surface water. When Sarah Liberty Lane was built, there are no ditches on that road, it's crowned and goes off into wooded buffers, which in theory works, DEP approved it apparently for that stormwater design. So the land is very flat in this twenty-two acres. So what I've done is I've lifted the road up at the entrance, and I've forced all my stormwater down to the end, and I've got a level spreader at the end, which fills with the stormwater, kind of like a collection spot, and then it goes out in a, just as it indicates, a level spreader, and it all goes off into the south-southeastly, into this wetland. So by putting a curb on both sides of this road, none of my road water is going to go off and impact anybody. And I've got an open space area here that'll be left in its natural state, no cutting, no clearing. That'll help alleviate any, any groundwater, and help, certainly help the, the abutting property. So the water, again, it'll be crowned, it'll... So the water, again, it'll be crowned, it'll come down, and when I get to this point in the roadway, then I'm going to have open ditches coming down both sides around my T-turnaround and into this level spreader. The lots, I'm going to fill the lots probably three feet of fill, create a drainage divide here, so all the water from probably the center of the roof of the houses, all the water will come forward, same with this lot here, because this is less of a concern with the neighbors being on the other side of the road. So again, we've looked at the issues, I've seen the photos, so we're trying to, I guess, be good neighbors. We've only got three lots in here. And the other... The other thing that was requested, probably Jim Wendell, Town Engineer, is I've got some crosshatched areas around these lots. What Jim would like us to do is after we fill these to accomplish the grading that we need to bring it forward, is to leave these areas in a natural state, let them grow in. You know, we'll lom and seed them to stabilize them, but let natural vegetation grow in all these areas. Again, will help keep, you know, the clearing limits down and help create just another buffer between the properties and help, again, just to keep this, try to put it back into more of a natural condition. So we've looked at it. We've tried to, again, pull everything to the south-southeast. The groundwater study that was done in 2001 indicates a very slight travel of groundwater in this direction. So again, we feel that with the three-lot design here, the impact to anybody to the north-northwest of us is not going to be aggravated by this development. So the waiver, again, we hope that that could be considered. This is a small project. Dan indicated Public Works, and I think Jim Wendell also, is suggesting that this road remain as a private road. We would like to have it considered as a public road. Obviously, it'll be built with the gravel depths, curbing. I realize the T-turnaround, if it should be on the other side, it would impact this lot, and I think Jim Wendell indicated a little bit longer pavement on that to meet all the public safety requirements. So that certainly could be accomplished, but I'll defer to the board on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. As is our process, before I turn this over to the board, I will allow for public comment. I would also like to indicate for the record purposes, just to make it a little to the fact that we have received some emails from folks regarding this project. We have a November 18th email from Kimberly Lehman. We have a February 23rd email from Andrea for that. We also have a February 17th email from Josh Suliman. So just wanted to make sure that we got that information in. All the board members received copies of these emails, trusting that they had an opportunity or took an opportunity to review them prior to this point of our meeting. Very, very similar to our public hearing, we would ask that anybody who wanted to speak this evening and make a public comment, please approach the mic, state your name and address for the record. We ask you to try to limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we also ask that, if at all possible, try to limit your comments to something somebody else hasn't already spoken about. So with that, I will open this up to public comment. If anybody would like to speak, please feel free to do so.
Great, yeah. Yes, sure. Okay. Well, I haven't sent any emails. My name's Robert Coppola. I'm the owner of 11 Sarah Liberty, and I'm kind of new to what's been going on here. Sort of sounds like to me, just preliminary, that their intent is to build these new homes Water seeks its own level. I'm the guy at the end. I'm going to be at the low end of the totem pole here. So that's a little concern that I have, because I already have water problems. You know, on a good rainstorm, I have two pumps running, both directions. You know, it sounds good that the water can get out to the wetlands. I've walked it. It isn't like it's much, much lower than my property. So I'm not really sure, you know, the details just yet of where all this water's going to go. You know, his idea of coming in off of Sarah Liberty with a curbing to act like a gutter and to start the water in the right direction, but it seems like it comes up short, which would be my backyard. So I have a little concern. I'd have to study that a little bit more to... If it's going to come in and just dump in my backyard, I'm going to be dealing with it. There's no doubt about it, because it already floods back there. So, you know, when you put a road in, you kind of seal off the surface. My understanding is you're creating a big gutter. So I do have a concern that I will be dealing with more water, and obviously, they know there's a problem. That's why he wants to build them up. It sounds like he wants to build them up three feet, which I wish my house was up three feet, and I wish the road was down two feet like it originally was planned. And I'm getting stories from my neighbors that the original, excuse me, the original engineering, Sarah Liberty, had the roundabout, the cul-de-sac, two feet lower. And John Grandin, who built my home, his engineering was based around that road being two feet lower. So, you know, I kind of get the feeling that, you know, at some point, if things continue, I'm going to be down here, and everybody else is going to be up here. And, you know, this is a little bit after the fact here, that some things have changed. And the other thing to take into consideration, that the, my understanding is that, you know, weather's getting more and more dramatic. You know, we don't get two inches of rain. We get five inches of rain. We get seven inches of rain when it rains. So, I mean, the resale, I have to look at the resale. I have to look at how many pumps I want to put in my basement to, you know, to try to deal with it. And again, my concern is if these wetlands really can't handle the volume, it's going to back up. If it's got no place to go, it's going to back up. So that's my concern tonight.
Mr. Coppola, just for clarification, right here.
Oh.
You...
Weird echo.
The house that you own was the one that John Grandin built?
Yes.
Okay. One more, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coppola.
Good evening. My name is Marlese Montgomery, and I own the property at 318 Holmes Road. And I'd learned about this more recently, maybe five or six weeks ago, from my neighbor, Josh Suliman, who I understand you have some documentation from, who kind of brought me up to speed as to what was going on. I understand also, and I want to just point out for the record, there was a letter, I think, that went out from the town to all the abutters, and I never received that letter, so I'm not sure what happened with that. But I want to express the same concerns about the water. For anybody that's familiar with the properties on Holmes Road, 316 and 318 have had an ongoing issue with major puddling, and the culvert was installed a year or two ago. The jury's still out on whether or not that's alleviated that problem, but I, too, have some pumps in my basement, and the water table is very high, and so it doesn't take a lot of rain for it to be an issue for us, and it's constantly, constantly something that we're having to address and deal with. I think that with the plan as it's designed, the lots that abut my property and Josh's property, again, with having to build that up, you know, that, to me, while some of the road water is going to come this way and into the wetlands, there's going to be also water that's going to go on the backside of that and just add to what is already a water issue for us on Holmes Road. So definitely a huge concern. I think the second thing that I just want to mention is that, you know, for us who seek land and property sort of on the outskirts of the town, we do that for a reason, because we want that extra acreage. We want that privacy, and, you know, if I wanted to live really close to a neighbor, I probably would have chosen a different area of the town to build my house on, but I like having two acres, and I like having the buffer and the privacy, and there's not going to be a lot of privacy in my backyard going forward. And so, you know, I just want to express that, that, you know, that's one of the major reasons why I chose that property to begin with. I've been there for 11 years, and I've been very happy, with the exception of the water issue, but now knowing that, you know, somebody's right in my backyard whom I don't know yet and who could bring who knows what to my property, it's definitely concerning. So I just wanted to make that statement tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery.
My name is Andrew Bradley. I and my family live at four Sarah Liberty Lane. I won't bring up the water, because everyone does, and we all love it. But I wasn't sure that the board was aware of. There are a couple of things that, while we were all talking amongst ourselves in the street, we all have deed restrictions and covenants on our land, which are part and parcel with this property that's located here. One of them are size restrictions, minimums for the structures that need to be built. I believe it's 1,800 square feet and 1,400 square feet, not absolutely sure. There are some other conditions require a single driveway for each house, requires requirements of out fencing and outbuildings, also types of construction, nothing modular. Certain slopes are required. I wasn't sure that anyone had made the board aware yet of these restrictions. But one restriction in particular that I think fits into what Marlese was saying was sort of the quality and character of our neighborhood. I know smart growth requires that undeveloped lands become developed, but it's smart to grow them in a way that's dependable and predictable, so that high-density growth happens where there's high density, where there are things like sidewalks, access to things, public spaces, requires high density. We are in a rural farmland area. Like Marlese said, we expect a certain amount of porosity in our lives. And to that point, if this road can't be a road, one would view it as a driveway. If it's not a public road, I would expect that the postal service wouldn't drive down this road to deliver mail. I would expect that the garbage collection would not go down this road to collect garbage cans. It's one of the covenants on this property is that the garbage cans aren't displayed, they aren't left out at the end of some common driveway. So that will require these landowners, potential landowners, to go 750 feet with their 64-gallon, 200-pound-capacity garbage cans, which might happen for a few months. But when all's said and done, those things are going to live on our street, which is against the bylaws of our land. It would also probably be expected that there'd be a ganged series of mailboxes at the end of this private way. So more and more, to me, it sounds like a single drive with three homes, which is more the character of a multifamily. So I think this is a subdivision within our subdivision that doesn't meet the same character and quality of what we are all purchased into, and it brings up a very fundamental caution for us. This is the primary investment of most of us. If the character of this neighborhood changes to a smaller home on a smaller lot, it reduces the value of those lots, it will in turn affect the value of our lots. So while I may not enjoy the idea of losing open space, I might enjoy the addition of neighbors, but I would definitely have a special, a special personal and financial consequence if these homes are developed in a way that reduces the nature of our neighborhood. I guess that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley.
Hi, my name's Corey Fravert. I live on one Sarah Liberty Lane, and just a few points to add about the water drainage. Many of you probably know this, but Woodfield, which runs in behind us, is a much higher elevation than where we are on Sarah Liberty, so all of their water drains off the back of their hill down into this wetland. So this area saturates pretty quickly. After about an hour of rain, I need to be heading home and checking my basement to make sure that I don't have a problem that I need to spend the rest of the day with. And the way that it flows now, once those wetlands are saturated, is it moves, and I think you've seen this from Josh's pictures, it moves this way towards Holmes Road and tries to access Bond Brook, which then takes it down into, below us, down into the, you know, wetlands in the pond that's down there off a broad turn. So really, about after about an hour, you start to see the water turn and head behind our lots, Kim and I, he and my lot, and then between Josh and I, and try to work its way to that ditch, and then move down to Bond Brook. So it's pretty striking, the water, surface water situation, because the water table is so high, and 15 inches sounds deep to me. I could dig, you know, a whole couple of shovelfuls, and I'd have water, you know, filled up, you know, in the back of my yard, so I'd question whether or not that depth is true as you get closer to Holmes Road. And then it's also our understanding that the board has to grant an exception for this type of arrangement to occur in this area, and we have a number of subdivisions around us, Woodfields, Sterlingwood, Goldenwood, Merrell Brook, Spring Brook, Fangler, Timber Sands, Carter Brook. None of those divisions have something that looks like this. I'm off of them. They're all nice, big, you know, two-acre lots, big homes, no private ways, so this would be really an exception to everything else that you see out where we are if it was built as it's designed. And when we bought the house, we knew that that lot was there, and that there was a chance that someday, you know, something would go in there, but this isn't really what any of us, I think, expected when we decided to move in this area of Liberty Lane. And then it was also mentioned, the piece about the title, and there is still some questions about why certain properties or certain parcels within this were held to certain covenants, and it seems like this piece or this subdivision is, it still doesn't seem clear to us, and those are questions that we'd be curious to hear more about as to why the board would actually grant an exception to this development. The other thing is we weren't able to find any DE permits on file here at the office, so even for Tamarack Place or some of the original subdivisions, there was no, there were no DE permits, DEP permits in the record, so that was a little bit curious, and would be interested to see how that is resolved. And then also, the stormwater analysis, you know, obviously in the spring, that's when it's at its worst, and it would be great to see some analysis done during that time of year. And we built an in-law apartment off of our house from an other-in-law, and when we put in our septic design, we had to build all of our septics above grade, so we could not disturb any of the ground. Everything had to be built up above that. So if that is true for these pieces, that, of course, is going to further impact, you know, water drainage and where, you know, where it's all going to go. And then the well exception areas, we spent quite a bit of time making sure that we were, you know, within or, you know, not doing anything within that well exception area, and we had to actually move some of our original design to stay outside of that area on our piece of property, and I didn't see that on any of the maps yet that we've looked at for this subdivision, so I'd be curious as to what those would look like in that space. And it does seem a little counterintuitive to me, and this is just a layperson, that you're building next to a wetland, so an exception is granted so that you can actually build more houses next to a wetland. That just, it might make sense in an urban area where you're compressed for space and you don't have a lot of room to do things, but in a space like this, where we're all out, you know, in the woods, you know, for a reason, to grant that kind of exception in an area like this just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to make sense. in an area like this just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to make sense, at least on paper. So that was all that I had. Thank you.
Excuse me, Corey, would you be so kind as to help us with your last name?
Freyvert. Freyvert.
I live on 24 Woodfield Drive. So I'm, my house is part of Woodfield Estates that kind of abuts behind Sarah Liberty Lane. Actually, my property abuts Mr. Coppola's. So I've generally the same concern he has, you know, the concern that Mr. Thompson addressed, which is the water concern on kind of the north, northwest side. I'm concerned with all of that groundwater coming down to the south and southeast side. The wetlands that are there right now do get very flooded, not just towards, towards my property, but towards a lot of the, you know, properties along Woodfield Drive. So I'm concerned that if all of that water gets pushed to the south and southeast, you know, we're going to be dealing with a lot of the same issues that it seems like Sarah Liberty Lane is already dealing with. There are houses on the other side of, of Woodfield Drive that are high. My property, which is here in the bottom corner, tends to be one of the lower properties. So as it, if you come in from, from Broad Turn, you know, there's, there's a bit of, kind of a flat entry and then it starts to climb. So I'm kind of at that base. And I'm expecting that if this proposal goes forward, we will see a lot of groundwater come our way. So I won't continue that any, any further. But I, I guess one question I did have is, it sounded like there was a groundwater study done in 2001, I think, mentioned. And I don't know if there's requirements to do additional groundwater studies with some frequency, the wetland and groundwater studies, when, when new subdivisions are going in. You know, 2001 seems like quite a long time ago. I don't know if there are requirements for that, but if maybe the, the board could address that. I did also notice that Lot 1 is less than 30,000 square feet. I know it mentions that all lots are a minimum of 30,000 square feet, but it's actually under 30,000 square feet. At least on these plans, it's 29,000 and some change. I'm sure that would, would get potentially addressed, but I just wanted to point that out as well. All right. I think that's all the questions I had, comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
I guess I have one more thing to add. The only thing I'd like to add is that when I purchased this property, I was told by Matthew Chamberlain, who was the broker, and also John Grandin, that the intent for the land behind me was for a brand-new home for John Grandin and his family. That's what I was told. And they, I mean, I should have got it in writing, obviously, if it, you know, if it isn't in writing, it doesn't exist. But, so this is a little bit of a shock that we're now dealing with a, with a small subdivision. I'm in real estate, too. I'm not against real estate. Everybody needs a place to live and it's just, this kind of caught me by surprise, to be quite honest with you. And it's a problem. Everybody in the street complains about the water and we just want to make sure that... I had, I got involved with a piece of real estate down in Massachusetts and, you know, this, this is not new to me. When you're talking $400,000 house lots down in Massachusetts, I backed out of a deal because of water problems. The neighbor would not cooperate. My people told me that there had to be drainage there. No one listened. They built the house. They all ended up in court. And the poor guy that ended up with that house, he's absolutely disgusted, you know, $1.5 million home, and he gets two feet of water in his basement. And he's tried everything. So, I mean, I, I feel for everybody with their water problems and I'm dealing with it myself. And, and, you know, the other thing, too, is when the power goes out, we don't have pumps. So that's another issue. You know, unless you want to spend, you know, $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 for a automated backup system, you know, that's great, but that's, that's another issue. No power, no pumps. So, but that, that was the story when I purchased my property, that it would never get developed, that John Grandin was going to...
I have another question for you. Why did, right here, right here?
Oh, I don't know. For some reason, it sounds like it's coming from over there.
I'm talking this way. Why did Mr. Grandin keep that other parcel? Was he planning to do something there eventually?
To build his home?
Or that's where?
Yes. That's what he told me and that was the story.
What he told us was he envisioned all of his family having homes back there on his property.
Is that land high and dry?
It's, it's, I've walked it a little bit.
Or is it similar to yours?
Yes. I, I don't, I don't see that it's, if it's lower, it's lower by a couple of inches. I mean, I, I sit in my backyard and I look out and I think he had said it's pretty much all the same level. So...
If we're going to have people talking, they really need to be at the podium.
So, I mean...
No, I just...
Okay.
You know, if you spilled 55 gallons of water in this room, the whole room would be flooded, providing the floor's level.
Yeah.
So whether, you know, that's kind of the way I'm looking at it. I don't think the water really has much... And, and after a good rainstorm, I mean, you could be looking at a week to 10 days before, before the water, you know, wherever it does go, it must, you know, percolate into the ground. You know, as, as Andy's told me, basically all we do is pump water around in circles until it finally decides to go away. So, I mean, there's no place for it to go. Maybe we could get a big pipe out to the ocean. Thank you.
Thank you. Is someone else?
I think Rob raises, raises a good point. I'm Dan Dewire from 6 Sarah Liberty Lane, and I do have an automatic generation system at my house. We moved here from Wisconsin and we live just outside of Kohler, Wisconsin. So we have a very nice whole-house Kohler generator, as do the laymans across the street. And as far as I know, every single house on our street does have at least a generator backup of some kind. I believe the laymans and we are the only two that have automatic systems. So basically, when we lose power, within three seconds, I'm back online and I can run for 11 days. And I must admit, my sump pump runs a lot, but I've never had water down the basement, thank God. The other thing which I object to, I guess, is the contention that water flow is this direction. The people on Holmes Road have told me that they've seen water going in their direction. So it must be going everywhere. It's going both down to Woodfield, it's also going out to Holmes Road. So that is a major wetland of some sort. The fact that the water table by the Arubi engineers is 15, 18 inches, that doesn't give me any confidence at all. How they're getting perk tests out of that, I would love to see the data for that. It just absolutely blows my mind. One time we bought property in New Hampshire and you could go down, you know, four or five feet and not get any water. And even then, we had questionable perk tests. And here at 18 inches, they're going to get a perk test or are they going to put a mound system in? I would think they're probably going to put a mound system in. And I don't know if that's allowed under our rules of our subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewire. We do appreciate your comments. Certainly we'll be addressing some of these or hopefully as many as possible with the applicant. One that I would like to clean up right out of the gate, I mean, obviously the water's the water. We've got, we're going to be discussing that with the applicant, but I do want to make one clarifying point is that there are no waivers being requested or being granted by this board in terms of this subdevelopment. So this is a conservation subdevelopment and it was actually designed, that whole conservation subdevelopment, part of the purpose for it being designed as it was, is to try to keep two things. Number one, try to be able to build more on areas where there were some wetlands, to be able to cluster houses a little bit closer, to allow for that, which also at the same time protects open space in portions of, of our town with the intent that it eliminates some of the sprawl that actually is occurring by just divvying up an 80-square-foot parcel, 80,000-square-foot parcels or whatever it might be. So this actually is, subdivision does not require a waiver and it's the type of development that we actually encourage. So for whatever that's worth, I'll pick it up. If I did not describe that properly, then please help us.
I think rather than having the smaller lots, prior to the conservation subdivision design, there could be three lots covering the 22 acres. You know, they'd be larger lots with much of the land being the wetlands that you see now being in open space. So the project is not allowed to have more lots. It's the size of the lots that are allowed. And then in exchange for smaller lots, there's a requirement to leave the wetlands in common open space so they're not owned by individual property owners and filled gradually over time, that kind of thing. So according to the calculation on the overall land area, there can be three lots on the property. It's whether they're large lots or small, it's, it's really just a scale of how big the lots are allowed to be. It helps.
So thank you.
Can you respond or at this point go ask a question?
I'm sorry?
When you say no waivers, does that include exceptions? Are there any exceptions being granted or are they one of the same?
Not at this point. No, waivers, a physical waiver.
There was, there were a couple of references to a request for a waiver of the nitrate flume analysis.
Right.
And that may have contributed to that perception. There may have been some...
Yeah, we have not granted that yet.
There's not an exception or a waiver being requested on the number of lots or the sizes of the lots. There are the two waivers being requested, one being the nitrate analysis that the applicant presented.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Can you explain what...
I would need you to go to the mic.
Sure. Can you explain what, what you mean by...
In your name, please?
Sorry, Rob Travis. I live at 8 Sarah Liberty. I was just wondering, when you say open space, who owns that open space? Do the three people have to create an association and they own the open space?
Typically, it's either the three lot owners would have an association to own the open space, or they can just own it in common without having an actual homeowners association. They all own a third of the land. It's not allowed to be really used for anything but for walking your dog in the woods or whatever you might do on, in the wooded area or, you know, go...
Thank you. I just wasn't clear what that meant.
Thank you. All right, I'll turn it over to the board. John, you're looking good.
I'm not ready yet.
All right. Susan?
Mostly procedural at this point.
What is our procedure at this point?
Well, my, it's really more of a question, I think, is that all of the points that have been brought up here tonight, most of the points that have been brought up here tonight deal with wetland impacts, it seems. And I'm not sure that, other than saying we're concerned too, that we can do much about it sitting here this evening. So I don't know what is it that we do do and we just, my thing would be to say, I agree. It looks like there's a problem. There's some inconsistencies in what we've been told and what other people have been told, but this is a, this is a wetland issue. So what can we do? What do we do now?
What I would suggest that you do, when you have an opportunity or if you would like to take it at this point, is we start to ask the applicant questions in regards to, how's, how's the drainage and stormwater being addressed? How's the issues that have been brought up by the members of the public?
Okay.
Are they being addressed? I certainly have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
In that regard.
Okay.
Also in regard to, you know, some of the covenants, how do we, how do we get to the bottom of what, you know, are there covenants on this property that might impact the design that we've laid out?
Okay.
That is a possibility, so...
Gotcha. Well, I don't have many, so I'll start. But we'll read the applicant.
Welcome back.
Okay, so one of the first things that, just a statement to begin with, this is a major wetland. It's a big problem we have in Scarborough. We have a lot of wetlands in Scarborough and they're all tricky. So I just want everybody here to know that we care. Taking care of wetlands in this town is a BFD and we do the best we can. It may take us a while, so we're not appreciative of the issues. The first thing I'm a little confused about is which way the water is running. Is it running in both? I'm not, I'm not asking you to give me an answer, but if you want to, that's fine. It's coming this way and it's going that way. Where does the line of demarcation occur? I mean, if it's going into Holmes Road and it's also going to come down, we know it's coming into the wetland, it has to, we got a wetland.
Correct.
So it's, it's going to be going that way, but it's also going the other way. So you happen to know where that demarcation line occurs?
I do not know what's happening northwesterly of this property.
But you're sure that the ones that we're talking about are all going to flow?
Based on the study in 2001, seven monitoring wells were put in there, seven.
In 2001?
2001.
Okay, so that leads me to what would be my first concern. Is it because of the nature of this, whether a 2001 study is recent enough? I mean, we are going to be adding more load, if you will, to the soil. And how is, go ahead, Dan.
Well, was the study done in anticipation of Tamarack Place or was there another purpose for the study? Because I'm not aware of the details of the study. So I think it's important to know whether it's, the study was done pre-development in the area or post?
Again, the study was done April of 2001 for Mr. Grandin, so I don't know what existed out there in 2001.
Is that prior to Tamarack?
I believe, I believe Tamarack Place was 2006 or 2007. I don't have those plans yet.
I think it's earlier than that.
2003.
Okay, so I'd like to put that as one of my concerns.
I think it's a clarification that we'd like to have.
It's a clarification issue. I'm not sure really what, whether or not the 2001 study is as recent as it needs to be. If it was pre-Tamarack Lane, it's a very different thing. And if it was post, in my...
I think it, there's implications for significant amount more development and how that relates to the ground, to the water table and the conveyance of water in the area, certainly.
Right. Okay, so that's one of my big concerns. Um, oh, where was it? I just wrote all over the place here. I got the confusion of which way it flows. These houses will have basements, I assume?
I believe I'm recommending no basements.
No basements. Okay. The curbing that's going to be on the, on the road, the entrance road, private road, yes?
If, if it does not get accepted by the town, the applicant would like it to be a town road, but...
It would like it to be a town road.
Would be, yeah.
Okay. Because somebody was talking about if it's a private road, is the issue of mailboxes and all that.
Private road wouldn't be our choice.
No, no, but I'm just saying, just know that if it's a private road, there are ways that that's all taken care of. But if, either way, what is the curbing going to be made of?
It'll be concrete, cast-in-place concrete.
That's a good sign. Okay. I'm a little confused about the fact that the buffers, that the buffers as shown on this plan are not consistent. Some are 30, some are 35, some are 40 feet.
Yeah, we tried to get a, a regular window, building window, if you will, and, and minimize the clearing to a 40% of the lot size. So, yeah, they, they do vary, but there was no rhyme or reason. We just wanted to get as much of the perimeter in, in natural conditions if we, as we could.
And keep it within 30,000 feet. It is, it has been pointed out that Lot 1 is not 30,000 feet. It's 29, 632.
This plan, that may have been old plan. This is 30,000.
Is 30,000, 33?
I believe an earlier version, there was a math error. But it has been corrected.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, the, the concern about what's going to happen with wetland impact... All right, the, the concern about what's going to happen with wetland impact of the additional building, I just had a bit of comment that has nothing to do except that people have mentioned Mr. Grandin. Unfortunately, this happens too often in my book. Who said if you ain't got it written down, it doesn't exist? I mean, that's really what it is.
Oh, I know.
We have nothing that we can do or say or, or take into consideration because of that, but I have had things happen to me that I understand that it's very disconcerting. It isn't, it's very disappointing, but this board can't do anything about that. Thank you, that's all I'm going to do for tonight.
Thank you, Susan. Nick?
Could you circle back to me? I'm still processing some of this.
Okay. Hey?
I'll give it a try. I, I think there's a lot of concerns here tonight, and I think they're very legitimate. That would be my biggest concern, would be the water issues. I would like some answers. Your, your wife, Mrs. Bravert, posed a lot of good questions, and I'd like some of those questions answered regarding the restrictions and covenants, as to whether or not those restrictions, covenants for Sarah Liberty Lane also apply to this property here. And if so, how does that impact the subdivision going forward? And the other, another issue, Mr. Thompson, you mentioned that based on the study back in, what, two thousand and one, the, the natural flow is towards the south.
South, southeast, yeah.
But my question is, where's it going to flow once the subdivision is completed and the houses are built? Because these houses are going to have to be built up. The septic systems will have to be built up. And when the rain falls and, and the watershed comes off the roofs and, and those mounds that the houses are sitting on, you know, my, my guess is that water's going to flow in all directions, including towards the north. So that, you know, that's a concern of mine. I ju, you know, I just, you know, for the record, when Mr. Grandin built his house, I was working for the town of Scarborough. I was, I was the assistant assessor. And I, I did have to go out and inspect that house, you know, for assessing purposes. And it seems to me, the information I got was that the reason, I think at that time his lot was forty acres or something.
Yeah.
And the reason was because of the wetlands. So here we are now, ten, fifteen years later, and we have a subdivision proposal, and we still have the wetlands issue. So that's, that's a big concern for me, and I just think a lot of questions need to be answered before I'm convinced.
Okay. All right, thanks, Dave. Corey?
Thanks. I'd certainly echo a lot of what, what Susan and David had said. And I would, I, you know, with all due respect to the applicant, I'm, I'm not, I haven't been very reassured about the, the answers that are available at this, at this stage. And it may just be that there's more due diligence that the applicant needs to do and maybe something that the town needs to do, to the extent that that's appropriate. And I guess the image that I keep having of this water issue, and I, I agree with Susan that the, the wetlands themselves, strictly speaking, as delineated here, are a major concern. There's also just a general ambient water table issue here, and it's a very flat area. And the image that I keep having is of a quote-unquote "flat" table, where if you spill a liquid on it, it's going to sort of spread in all different directions, and, and if you keep pouring water or whatever liquid, it's going to kind of, there may be a net movement in one direction or another, but at some point, the, the moisture is going to work its way into a lot of different areas. And that's kind of the image that I keep having, particularly thinking about a two thousand and one study, which is in itself sort of a snapshot. And there may have been a, a net, a net movement in, in one direction, but based on a lot of the anecdotal evidence that, that we're hearing, it sounds like, you know, the, the water's always there, either at the surface or just below it. And at the end of the day, it's almost, almost feels sort of academic to be talking about, well, what's the ultimate direction which it's going to go? And then once it's there, it's really still part of the same, almost closed system, it feels like. And I'm not a, you know, I'm not a hydrologist or anything, but that's the, that's the sense that I have, based on some of the, again, anecdotal things that we've heard and to the extent that we looked at some of the peer review. So I, you know, at this point, I would consider myself definitely a skeptic, and I would need to see more information and, you know, to me, this also is a, it's an example of a, I think, a, an issue I've had in general with some of these conservation subdivisions. And I'll say, you know, that generally speaking, conceptually, I'm, I'm a fan of them, and I, and I, I understand the, the planning principles behind them, and I, I think that they're, they can be very successful and accomplish some, some good goals and good, be good planning. But it seems to me sometimes that we see some of these proposals that are just, they're just sort of, they feel kind of shoehorned in, and, and that, you know, to me beyond, you know, below a certain, what feels like a critical mass, it just doesn't feel like it's really, it seems like it's more trouble than it's worth, for lack of a better term, a very non-technical way to put it. And so sometimes when I find myself looking at proposals like this, I just end up feeling like, well, you know, we're going through all this for three, three house lots, and we're impacting wetlands, and we're potentially exacerbating the water issue for existing residents. So, you know, I, I'm always open to more information, and it sounds like we have a lot of questions here, and there certainly are the questions around chain of title and covenants and restrictions, which, you know, there are times when those questions get raised in an almost kind of pro forma way by people who are looking to stall a project or something like that. But I think in this case, there are some legitimate, very valid questions that I think merit further review. So let's, at this point.
Thank you, Corey. Brady?
I'd like Corey to go first.
Yeah.
That's a lot, a lot of stuff that I had to say. I kind of agree, you know, when you first looked at this, what you tried to accomplish with the drainage of the road, it looked okay. But then you look at this whole area, from the elevations we're showing on our sheets, we're only talking basically three feet difference between all you guys' properties up there. I'm not sure if I'm ready to approve something to dump that much more water. I'm not necessarily concerned about the individual lots, I'm more concerned about the road itself, dumping that much more water in that area that's very low. I'd like to see some more elevations, if possible. Robert Kopola's lot, I'd like to see some elevations close to that, to see how that's going to impact him. I don't see anything there. And we see that Cloney, looks like we're going to dump a ton of water at his property. That elevation's correct. We're talking going from one forty-two to one thirty-three. That's a pretty good impact to me, as far as that particular lot.
Which property was that, sir?
Philip Cloney, which is at the end near Lot Two. Showing an elevation arrow, one hundred and thirty-three. Over one forty-two, even one forty, one forty-point-eight or so. Actually, it looks like it's going to severely dump into that person's property. Never mind the whole area being wetland to begin, to begin with, but it looks like it's going to dump a lot in his area. That's all I've got. Just like to see some more elevations, see whether it's act, whether water's actually flowing.
Thanks, John. Do I have one else?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think, I think this, all of my colleagues here have done a wonderful job of explaining that the major areas of concern. Philosophically, I'm one of those people that if you own a piece of property, I'm, I believe that you should be able to, within reasonable standards, do what you, what you would like to do with it. However, I do happen to have a conscience, and I think putting three new people in the middle of a big puddle like this, without proper attention to how you can mitigate the, some of that water issue, would, would be a big stumbling block for me. And, and, you know, understand where I'm coming from, that's, you know, I, I, it just, there's got to be a lot of work done to convince me, and it sounds like the rest of this board, that we're not going to exacerbate the problem at all, and that we can take very certain measures to try to mitigate it, even, even help out some of the existing homeowners, although that's not necessarily your responsibility. Would kind of be the right thing to do if you have the heavy equipment already out there playing in the sand. That would be my personal twist to this. From as far as more technical standpoint, you mentioned a need, you know, a request for a waiver on the traffic impact study. As far as my personal feelings on that, that would be, I think, three new houses do not warrant a traffic study. It's my opinion. So if you needed some guidance there on, at least where one of the board members might be leaning, I would be, I would be okay with waiving a traffic study. As far as the other request, which is a nitrate analysis, I'm not certain, I would be supportive of, although I'm always willing to learn more, of skipping any process that's going to have to deal with the, the land itself at this point. So that's, that's the extent of my comments.
Obviously, water is probably the number one concern that we're going to have to deal Some of my concerns in regards to that is, and this always becomes very difficult to me, because I, I have a very layman's concept of stormwater management, and, you know, we joke sometimes that you only need to know three things to be a plumber, kind of thing, right? One of them being water runs downhill.
Correct.
In my vision of this, what I always struggle with is the fact that we put a development in, how we deal with water, how we move water. The fact of the matter is, the water is the water is the water, and the development doesn't add water. The rain is what's going to come down, or the snow is what's going to melt, and it's not the development that changes the amount of water. But what it potentially is, is that the development can direct the water, depending upon how it's built. For the eight and a half years that I've been on this board, I would say that the majority of the time, we've been successful in taking water and directing it better than what Mother Nature might have directed it, in terms of individual property owners. Because we have the opportunity with a fresh piece of ground, if you will, to be able to say, if we can take all the water and move it in one given direction, then we stand the chance to redirect water that was causing water problems to an area where the water can physically be handled better, moved better, and hopefully through modern technology and engineering, we can improve a site more than we can cause harm. And I think we accomplish that more often than not. I didn't sit here and say they were perfect, but I think we do a fairly decent job of trying to make that happen. So the onus is on you to help us understand how you're going to make that happen on this site, so that not only the members of this board are comfortable with that, but the members who have got up and talked to us this evening can feel more comfort as well as we move through. That's all I want to say about the water side of it. In terms of the public road, the onus is on you to get together with the DPW to get them to want to accept the law. Gut and dry. If that's not the case, Dan, can you help us understand about services that might be provided on a private road, or how that might be impacted as was addressed by one of the folks?
Sure. Yeah, in most cases, there are town services that can go down private roads. There was concern about recycle bins and garbage bins being collected at the end of the road, on the public road. In the past, the wastes management company is willing to enter into private agreements with lot owners along private roads. That's an extra fee, though, so that needs to be something that's paid above and beyond your property taxes to, to do that, but they're willing to go down. Most paved roads, in the case of a twenty or twenty-two foot wide road, that has adequate turnaround, they could go down and collect solid waste and recycling, et cetera. Mail is something that's outside the control of the town, so I certainly can't give you a definitive answer as to whether there would be mailboxes on a private road or a cluster at its intersection with Sarah Liberty. So I don't know that that relieves fears or not, but that is done in many private roads in town where there's fees paid so that the private hauler will, will go down those roads.
Right. Thanks, Dan. I'm not comfortable yet as to whether or not we have covenants that will impact this property, and I think that staff also has some concerns that we've heard that have been brought up. Somehow we have to make a determination what is and what is not at play, Bill, in terms of the covenants, before we can go further.
Okay.
My personal feeling on the plume analysis waiver is no. I think here, especially because of the water issues, I think we have to be extra careful in terms of what's going to happen to that, where it's going to happen, and how do we manage it. One of the questions that I also have is in regards to, is there any, I don't know how we get this data, but one of my concerns is that if we have this surface water, how, how often do we have this surface water? What's the, what's the percentage of time that the surface water is there? And where I'm going with this primarily is, how might that impact any net residential calculation that we should be making on this site? If we have a substantial amount of surface water present for a pick percentage, I don't know what the right percentage is, but if we're, if we have standing water twenty-five percent of the year, should that be considered lots that are usable and buildable? I mean, I, I just have a question. I don't know how to answer that question, but I, I don't know if there is a best practice that would address that, and if there is, could you help me with that? I, you don't have to do it now.
Okay.
When you come back.
Okay.
Traffic study, I also, like Nick, don't have a problem with, I don't think we need to do a traffic study for three houses.
Yeah, it's just an impact value. We agree with it?
Yeah, it's an impact value, I think, you know. The trip ends, and the trip ends on three houses that's pretty straight and dry, cut forward. I don't think we have to go too, too far down. And I guess I will go back to the water one more time, but in terms of the water movement, especially, geez, it's, it's just all over. How do we control it going from this development to the properties that are going to be like on the north side or up towards Holmes Road? And can we determine what happens if we take all the surface water down the road? And, you know, you're trying to redirect it, I appreciate all of that, but that water potentially has never gone there before. So how do we predict what's going to happen with all of that extra water going down into the wetlands, and how that's going to spread?
That can be done.
If we can, if we can...
Yep, there's calculations for that.
That out, I think that would be helpful as well.
Yep.
Based on the notes that I made of the comments that were made by the public, I think we've addressed most of the items, and hopefully, we haven't missed any. So at least the ones that, the ones that I wrote down, and I think I've got the majority of them. Any other comments by the board? Any, Cory?
I'd just add that I would agree with you and Nick on the waiver requests. Yes on traffic study, no on nitrate.
Okay. What else can we do for you tonight?
It's gonna be a long night. I'll have all this done tonight. There was one question, Mr. Chairman, from the board. Somebody said they were looking up DEP permits, perhaps on, maybe on the earlier development. My notes say that when Sarah Liberty Lane was developed and engineered by another engineer, not BH2M, that that received a permit by rule for stormwater. So there would not be much of a file on it. There should be a copy of that to the town, but that's a permit that's granted in 14 days by DEP if they see no issues. So that would have been the only permit, and that's what we'll be charged with if we move forward with this project with DEP, is a permit by rule for stormwater.
Okay.
And again, I just want to clarify, you know, there's been a lot of comments about impacting the wetlands. We're not impacting the wetlands. We're not touching a square foot of the wetlands. We're bringing stormwater to it, but we're not impacting it by the sense of needing a permit or anything like that.
No, I, and if I alluded to that, my comment really was more the impact of the water, the additional water coming into the wetlands.
Correct. Thank you.
That's what I meant by the impact. I did not think you were disturbing.
Yep.
Okay? So, and in fact, the conservation subdivision is so that you don't have to sit there and touch any of it.
Correct.
That's the beauty of it. So I mean, so I do appreciate that. So if you're good with us...
I'm good with that list.
That's enough of a list for you to work on tonight? Okay.
Thank you.
Then we're good then. So, thank you. It would be unusual, but I'm feeling good tonight.
Good, 'cause I have one, too.
No, I wanna go home, guys.
The wetland doesn't stop here. There's another 10 acres of wetland right there. So all the concerns about water pouring out here, I assume would also...
Where's it gonna go? I mean, that's, I think that's...
Same question.
That's basically what I'm asking Mr. Thompson to look at, is what happens to the water? Where does it go?
Right. I noticed that there was no indication of wetland over here, but there are, there's plenty.
Yeah, and it's merely the site that he was in the design of itself. Not trying to hide it, just...
That's basically the reason I asked for the elevations, is to see where this is going. I see a little bit of elevations to the right-hand, left-hand side of that, but don't see anything on the other side, to see where the water actually is gonna go.
I'll allow one more question. Good. The question that I have is this. If we construct this road, whatever it is, 700 feet long, or whatever, times 22 feet wide, are we building this road up? Okay. And the three house lots will also be built up, correct? Okay, so essentially, if I was to come in here with, you know... Question and a comment, by the way.
Careful, won't be a question.
Okay. Are we essentially taking away storage from this wetlands? If we...
We're creating storage in some sense by putting it through a filling, and directing the water to them. I'm not taking away storage, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but see, if you're sitting in a hot tub, right, and you get a glass, you're not gonna direct the water anywhere. I think what we really need to do is, we really need to see what his study comes back with, 'cause it's hypothetical at this point. In other words, when you add a second person to the hot tub, the water comes up. It's got no place to go.
I think it's been established that we understand the question.
Okay. All right. All right. But no, thank you. We appreciate what you're saying, but until we actually see the results of the study, it's very, very difficult to... We can try to look at this six different ways. None of us are professionals, except the man in the white.
Could you do the study in the springtime?
All right. Our next item on our agenda this evening is an administrative amendment report. Mr. Baker?
I'm not aware of any. Are you, Mr. Chair?
I am not aware of any, either. A town plan is report?
Yeah, I have a couple announcements for the board, and perhaps Mr. Chase has updated you in the last few months, but planning staff and the Long Range Planning Committee have been working on possible amendments as it relates to the town's ability to have what they call municipal capacity, or what's, for site law development review by DEP. Right now, DEP reviews larger development projects in Scarborough for their impacts on a wide range of things: wildlife habitat, historic resources, aesthetics, development footprint, that type of thing. The town's been interested in pursuing local capacity or administration of that as a way to make development review more efficient, as well as to actually incentivize development in our growth areas. It's an allowance that's only allowed by the state within our business zones, or where we're encouraging development, not in the rural areas. So there are a set of amendments that will be coming forward to the council. One in your site plan review ordinance about historic resources and making sure that we're reviewing historic properties before development occurs there, and also concerning wildlife habitat. Both of those are currently done by the state. But with those amendments, the town would be found competent and comprehensive enough in our ordinances to do that locally. So it provides, it puts a little bit more onus on the planning board in terms of what you review, but it also makes development review more seamless, not as long for applicants, 'cause typically, that review takes, could take four to six months at the state level. And the Long Range Planning Committee's been working on what those amendments look like, and they're gonna go to the council in the next month or so, and I wanted to provide you a heads-up in that regard, and also, we'll be providing you the actual amendments so that the board understands them before they get adopted by the council. So there'd be amendments in the site plan ordinance and the subdivision ordinance regarding that capacity or local authority. The other thing worth noting for the board, and also any viewers at home, the Transportation Committee's been working on cross, a proposal for crosswalk improvements and other improvements at the Oak Hill intersection, really as a second phase to the sidewalk that went in along Black Point Road last fall, and also is part of the larger effort to continue to make Oak Hill more friendly to pedestrians and crosswalks, et cetera, to complement what Biddeford Savings Bank did down at Hannaford Drive. And next Wednesday, there's gonna be a half-an-hour workshop or so before the town council meeting with the town council, for the Transportation Committee and staff to present the improvements around Oak Hill, get their feedback in anticipation of continuing design work on that, and maybe construction later in the summer or fall to, again, improve crosswalks, actually add the missing, what's now a missing length of sidewalk along the gas station between the new assisted living facility they put in a sidewalk and the Oak Hill intersection. So if you're interested in that, it would be at 6:30 to 7:00, or you can watch at home. So those are a couple updates as to what's being worked on in the planning department, and also Transportation Committee.
All right. Thank you, Dan. In terms of correspondence, anything other than the emails that have already been mentioned? Anybody receiving any? No? Me, planning board comments this evening.
Only I won't be at the next meeting.
Thank you for the heads-up on that.
Sunny Florida.
Beautiful place to be. Chair would entertain a motion. Yes, Dave?
Are we gonna have a workshop at the next, before the next meeting, or...
Last I knew, it was the 31st of March.
Yeah. I think we have a full board at the 31st, so to, in order to accommodate John's trip to Florida, we're gonna wait until March 20th.
Okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Is there a second? We have a second as well? Dave, I think Nick's got a little... Any discussion? All in favor?